It's 6:30 in Reedfield, Maine. Please join me to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I hope some folks are in cool environs watching this Select Board meeting. This is the Select Board meeting for June 7, 2021. It's our first live meeting in a long time. And we're observing the protocol regarding masking and so forth, which is we don't need to wear a mask, and I believe everybody here is vaccinated. If anybody wants to drop on by, please do. We'll start with the Select Board minutes of May 7, 2021. That were in your packet.
I would move acceptance.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes as published for this Select Board meeting of May 17. Is there any discussion or corrections that we should consider?
Eric has some.
Notice, notice corrections, just a point that Kristen Parks, who takes the minutes, is excused this evening because she has an election tomorrow.
Yes, yes, that is good.
That's notes.
Wait a second.
Anything, Catherine?
Nope.
Okay, seeing none, we'll call for a vote, and I don't need to do-
A roll.
A roll call vote, so all in favor. Thank you. That'll cut about 20 minutes off the meeting. We'll go to warrants 49 and 51. Chris reviewed these warrants, and actually Ralph is going to go ahead and take us through them this evening, so want to start with 49.
I have paperwork for 52, 53.
Okay, I'll go ahead and tell you.
52B.
Okay. And in your packet is the warrant 49. It is for $2,389.98. It is a warrant of state fees. Is there any discussion on that warrant? Seeing none, I'll take a motion on warrant 49.
Will we approve 49?
Second.
It's been seconded to approve warrant 49 on the amount of $2,389.98. All in favor? Thank you. And if there was any discussion, you may now make a remark. Do you have 50?
I have, no. I started 52.
50 and 51 are in the packet as well.
Yes, okay, so 50 and 51, and warrant 50 and 51 are payroll and state fee warrants. And I'm assuming that 51, as I look at it, I'm looking at it as we speak, there were some checks in that. And notable would be 68, 28 for the main municipal employees' health, and then resource recovery was $2,700. And again, the total on warrant, 50? And so that's 50 and 51 is, and I'll move it, I'll move acceptance of warrants 50 and 51 on the amount of $49,698.64.
Seconding.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on warrants 50 and 51? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All in favor? Thank you. Warrants 15, 51 are approved in the amount of $49,698.64. Now, I think we're caught up to you, aren't we not?
Now, I think I have something to say.
Okay, so we're on warrant 52?
52 and 53.
Okay.
In aggregate, 746, 634,03. Part 1 is employee salaries, $40,027,34. Accounts payable, 706, 246, 69. The biggie is the RSU 38, 302, 909, 02. And the other is mainly paving services, which is 332,132, 47. There's a significant hit, as usual, for central main power. And the usual load for waste management, 87, 9007. Again, in aggregate, 746, 634, 03, and I would move acceptance of warrants 52 and 53.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 52 and 53 in the amount of $746,634.3. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Please.
For Eric. Ralph said that it's the usual suspected amount for CMP. Has that gone down since we've put in the LED lighting?
The component for the LED lighting has gone down, or for street lighting in general, has gone down as a result of the LED light. And we're under budget this year. We budgeted conservatively because we were halfway through the fiscal year, basically when we started doing this. And so next year, we'll see another small decrease in the budget.
Awesome.
Great.
Thank you.
And did we vote?
No. And the paving, was that for Sturtevant Hill and Plains Road?
That's correct.
And that was the bill in full for those?
That was 300 and something thousand. It was sizable, but yes, that's the full bill for all of that paving work.
And is that what you said it was, 332?
That's-
I heard 32, and I was like-
302, 909, no, 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 excuse me, 332, 132, 47.
332. I just heard the 32, and I'm like, we got all that paving for 32,000?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Great, awesome, thank you. I'm all done.
Great. Any other comments or questions on warrants 52 and 53? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you. Great. Regarding communication this evening-
We have one more.
Oh, we do? Which is 53?
52B.
Okay.
$13,998.3, Treasurer, State of Maine.
What was that number again, Ralph? 990.
99083, correct.
Go ahead. It's all state fees? It's all state fees.
It's all state fees, yes.
So we have warrant 52B. I'll go ahead and move it in the amount of $13,998.83.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrant 52B. Is there any discussion or questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Thank you. So I did have a question as we get into communications. Are we also on the Zoom platform tonight?
We are.
Okay. But I'm seeing the screensaver because probably nobody's on Zoom at the moment.
That's a question for Bill.
Bill, do we have anybody on Zoom tonight? I hear the pitter-patter of feet. Do we have anybody on the Zoom feed?
Grace.
Grace.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yay, Grace, thank you.
It is, it's the perfect picture to cool down to.
It is.
We have a snowy scene on the screen.
It makes me feel, yeah.
We'll start with Select Board Communications. Do any members of the Select Board have anything they would like to share?
I'll start with one thing. I was driving down the fog road the other night with my family, and the comment from them was, wow, this town does a nice job with their town roads. Lines on the side, it's in good shape. So there you go, Eric.
Good to hear. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes, I just want to say real quick that the Heritage Days Committee has had our first meeting. Thank you, I was waiting. I hope you did that at home. Yes, exactly. So we have, we have quite an action-packed day in store. Of course, we are talking about the August 13th, 14th, and 15th. The 13th is Friday, the 14th is Saturday, and the 15th is Sunday. We have events that range from the Historical Society to the library, to the fairgrounds, back down to the beach, to the meeting house, and all over Reedfield. And it's very exciting. I was also informed that this is the 100 years ago, the cornerstone of the post office Mason Hall building was laid, and it's also the 100-year anniversary of a Reedfield fire.
At the corner.
At the corner.
It's just probably why we got a new Mason building, right?
I would, it does seem to be, if you do some sleuthing, you could figure out that. But it does seem we are sort of thinking about different ways that we can engage. We plan to have some food available. There's going to be music down at the beach, and we're also going to have some other activities for people of all ages, so check it out. That's Reedfield Heritage Days. We have a Facebook page. It's Heritage Days. You can find it through the Reedfield page, but Reedfield Heritage Days is on Facebook. And I just want to say thank you very much for that.
Get yourself to Heritage Days.
Get to Heritage Days, it's a Patty Wicket.
Great. Any other members of the board have anything they'd like to?
I would like to say thank you to everyone who's supported me these last six years, and all the people that have reached out to say thank you, which surprised me immensely. But, you know, it was my pleasure to serve, and I was glad to help.
Anybody else? We're all set? Ralph, you all set?
No, I just-
With the board-
Thank Chris for her support and encouragement way back then.
Absolutely. Would the board indulge me to make closing remarks at the end of the meeting?
Okay.
Good idea.
We'll go with brief staff reports. I gave an adjective there.
I heard it long and thorough.
Was he trying to have a short last meeting or something?
No.
All right, so road sweeping is underway. We've gotten most of the roads taken care of. It feels like it's later than usual because the temperature is unusual this year, but this is actually just about on par with when we usually have that work done. As noted, paving on plains and sort of in hill road is complete. Shoulder gravel will be happening this week, maybe into next, but we do give the asphalt time to cure before we put the gravel on the edge of it. Once the gravel's down and blown off a little, then we will go back and stripe the white lines. As you notice, both plains and Sturtevant have yellow lines, but we didn't do the white because when you scrape the gravel, and it can mess up the nice new paint. So we're not going to do that. We also, with this paving work, put a lot of attention into the corner at the intersection of Rat Mill Hill Road, Gay Road, and Plains Road. So that area received aprons on both of those gravel roads to make a much better, hopefully safer, transition. We also did some shoulder work to make visibility better coming from all directions. So I'm really pleased with how that turned out, and the public safety is greatly improved at that one area. Let's see, striping and crack sealing RFPs are in, and those are up for discussion this evening. Our mobile speed trailer is out and will be for the season. We do move that around to several different areas of town, so if anybody has an area of particular concern or interest, I encourage folks to please give me a call, and we'll put it out wherever we can, whenever we can. Typically, we leave it out for a couple weeks just to make sure that we get the message across, and people that are traveling through understand what the speed is and what the speed limit is. Moving on to parks and recreation, the Reedfield Beach is officially open. We have no charge for Reedfield residents this year pursuant to the vote last year, but folks still do need to get a beach pass so we know who's who, and we can look at every vehicle in that parking lot and verify that they're supposed to be there. So that's an important thing. It's been used heavily the last couple days. I want to thank our summer staff, London Putnam, Morgan Boynton, and Noah Ward Rubin. Special thanks to Noah, who received his lifeguard certification this past weekend. Noah is our lead attendant at the beach. And that rolls into the next piece, is that we will be able to offer swim lessons this year for the first time in many, many years in partnership with Augusta YMCA, and that will likely be happening mid-July through August, if I remember the discussion correctly. But more details and information will be forthcoming shortly on that. Transfer station, we now have internet service at the transfer station. That's the first time we've ever had internet service there, so it's going to be a big step forward for us operationally. Speaking also of additional operational improvements, we do have a signed contract with R and R OS, which is a Reedfield-based company that services primarily the restaurant business with security cameras and operating systems for their table service. Interestingly, table service at a restaurant is not that different than running materials through a transfer station. So we're able to work with them to have a platform to accept credit cards and to process electronic payments. So that's in place. We will have training for the staff, and I expect if it's not this month, it'll be early next that we'll have that capacity at the transfer station. It'll also improve efficiency for back office staff. Teresa ends up having to re-enter all of the information from those handwritten paper slips so we can track and keep records for DEP. That's going to be a thing of the past. We'll be able to pull a single report to manage all of that. Huge improvement for us at the transfer station there and for the quality of service for the residents. The hazardous waste collection day is going to be Sunday, July 11, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. The transfer station will be open for other activities, but we're hoping that we can keep traffic separated as we did in the past. And we do require pre-registration, so if you want to bring any kind of material hazardous waste to the transfer station, please check with the office, excuse me, and pre-register so we can keep a good flow of traffic.
Is that form available online, Eric?
Not yet. It will be when we make the big announcement.
Awesome.
On the website.
So you can download it, but you still need to get it to the town office?
That's right. It all needs to be catalogued at the town office.
Okay.
Yep.
One question again about the hazardous day.
Yeah.
We do have a paint storage and swap facility there, so if folks simply want to get rid of paint, they don't necessarily have to avail themselves of their service on that day, so to keep congestion down. If all you want to do is get rid of paint, pick another day.
That's a very good point, Ralph, yet we can accept that at any time. Same thing with CFL bulbs. And if you do have a large quantity of material, please give us a call beforehand. I know pre-registration is required, but sometimes people will show up with 50 gallons of stuff, and that's just a lot to handle, so.
Eric, isn't there some limitation on the paint that can come to paint care, which is why we do it? So is it if it's-
It has to be residential, yes.
Okay, but if you're missing the label on your can, then you need to bring it to the hazardous waste day, correct?
That's right, that's right.
But as long as it's labeled cans, it goes into the paint care.
And if you're running an auto body shop, we can't accept that because it's considered commercial waste.
Right, you don't take commercial waste. This is all-
We don't. Household hazardous waste, that's the key term.
Right.
We will work with businesses if they want to, again, contact us in advance and pay the full price for the material to be disposed of, so.
Gotcha.
And the last item I want to touch on with the transfer station is that we are back to Sunday hours. We had 41 vehicles this past Sunday, which was fantastic. That's two-thirds of our peak last summer, so I expect we're going to continue to see a lot of use of that day. And those hours are from 8:00 a.m. to noon every Sunday except the 4th of July through the weekend before Labor Day. Not Labor Day, the weekend before Labor Day. And the last area I want to talk about is administration and personnel. The town meeting secret ballot is tomorrow at Kent Hill School. I hope folks are able to get out and vote. We do not have the ability to do absentees anymore. Folks will need to go to the Alphon Center and vote in person. And I do want to thank the Kent Hill School for their use of the Alphon Center, and also all of our election staff who have had to make some extra steps with the transition between staff to make this a smooth and effective election, and so I want to thank them for that. Last point is that we are planning a local vaccination clinic at the Reedfield Fire Station, and I want to thank Chief Lee Mank for starting to organize and taking the lead on that. I'm very excited to have that happen locally. It's just one more step to make sure that we can have our residents be as safe as possible and not catch COVID. So that's my report, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Do you know when that clinic will be?
We don't, we're still in the early stages of planning.
Okay. And Eric, in our packet was the-
Audit.
The audit from Barry Talbot and Roy Eric. I don't think we need to really talk about that tonight, but I just wanted to point it out, and do you have anything you wanted to mention?
I will say that we are waiting on paper copies to be available in the office. The audit in its entirety will be posted online, as every audit is every year. If you go to the Finance Director's page or Town Manager, you should be able to link to it that way. And highlights really are that we're continuing to function effectively. We improved our net position. In most cases, revenues were above projections and expenditures were below projections, which is always where we want to be. The question of how far above and how far below is one you always want to grapple with, but in my view and in the view of the auditors, as far as they are willing to say, we're doing a very good job of that.
And the audit is for the fiscal year 20, right?
2020, so ending June 30 of 2020.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
One quick question for clarification. It's my understanding that we basically have a clean report, which is basically for laypeople like me who can't read these things after the end, after the quarterly reports are out, that says we did okay?
That's right, there were no flagged items, there was nothing that wasn't able to be resolved through, you know, accounting and the usual review and audit process. One thing I will say is that our auditors, Barry Talbot, Royer, did have a staff change, and so they will not be able to support us next year. We were actually at the end of our three-year contract with them, so I will be issuing an RFP for audit services within the next couple of weeks to ensure that we can get somebody in and we can start that end-of-year review process that's so important to a full audit.
With a target that is earlier than what we've been-
Far earlier. The auditors were very apologetic, and COVID has been a major factor for them.
As with everything, great. Thank you so much. Any other questions for Eric?
No, thank you for a great report.
Yep. Although he did say, and my last item is three times, very good. Town wards committees, commissions, and departments. I want to thank the Trails Committee for their minutes of April 28, 2021. The Comprehensive Plan Committee minutes for March 17 and April 21. And for those that are interested in that comprehensive plan, those minutes are excellent to review what's taken place thus far. The Budget Committee minutes of April 1, which is kind of when they had all their endorsements and so forth regarding the town budget tomorrow. And then finally, the Library Board minutes of April 7, 2021. I don't know if we have any public comments. Are there any? Do you have any via Zoom?
Bruce?
Yes, Grace, hi, how are you?
I'm fine, thank you. I just want to thank you and Chris for your years of service on the board. I know you've gone through some difficult times, and, but I think you both have done a wonderful job, and I really appreciate your doing that. Thank you so much.
That's very generous of you, and Grace, I want to say thank you too as well, because having citizens engage on a fairly regular basis is always, always a good thing. And you've been at it probably the majority of the meetings, at least that I've chaired, so thank you.
Thanks, Grace.
Oh, you're welcome, both of you.
We'll move on to appointments, reappointments, and resignations. 21130, consider the appointment of Thelma Parks as ballot clerk for June 8. We've been approving ballot clerks for both parties the last couple of meetings, most of them last meeting, I believe. And so this is one more, and could I have a motion in regards to that?
I'll make a motion to appoint Thelma Parks as a ballot clerk for the election being held on June 8, 2021.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Thelma Parks as a ballot clerk for June 8, 2021. That's tomorrow, please vote. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We're going to consider the resignation of Gary Peeltie from the Comprehensive Plan Committee, and actually, I'm going to go ahead and move that we accept Gary's resignation with regrets, and a note that Gary has been involved in a great many town endeavors and committees, and chaired our Trails Committee through really its inception, I believe, or near inception and expansion. So, you know, the town is very grateful to his involvement in the town, and we regret seeing him leave the Comprehensive Planning Committee. So that's my motion?
Second.
So moved and seconded to accept that resignation. Is there any other discussion on Gary's resignation? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to old business. The floor is yours, Eric, to talk to us in regards to the outcome of the winter roads maintenance RFP and next steps. A very brief background is we've put the RFP out twice. We have not got an official response, and so we're kind of at a position where we need to consider some different approaches and a different series of steps that a board would authorize. Go ahead.
Thanks for the summary and the background there. That's exactly right. We did go through an extensive process, had, depending on which iteration we looked at, very little or no interest. We did ultimately receive one proposal from Cushion Construction, and my suggestion or recommendation is that we do negotiate with them. I talked to John today to confirm that they were willing to discuss the proposal, which ultimately did consist just of a single-page letter, and I expressed the fact that I wanted to see a full contract, and so that is a part of what we would be discussing and negotiating. So I am hoping that I can get the board's support in pursuing that and pursuing a level of service and cost of service that is acceptable. And that's a very broad term, but I think it's one that needs to be there so that we are not necessarily locked into working with the contractor if, in fact, we're not able to get to a place that makes sense for the community. I think we would be able to get there, honestly, I do. And John has provided, and his crew and his staff have provided excellent service over the past five years for the town of Reedfield. So I think we're in a good spot, even though we haven't had a lot of interest, but one that's a little bit tricky. I did have to involve legal counsel on a few points, and so that's what I'm looking for.
So Eric, let me just ask you a quick question on this. So what we're voting on tonight is to authorize you to negotiate and perhaps with the Deputy Road Commissioner and representatives from either the road committee or both, and the Select Board if desirable, but it's not authorization to sign, that would still be subject to a Select Board action?
That's right. One of the things that hasn't been presented is the actual proposal because it's not in final form yet, and it would be probably not the most appropriate thing, a little bit tricky from a negotiating perspective to have that present and out there at this point. So, yep, that's what I'm looking for.
Who is our Deputy Road Commissioner?
That is Anna Carl.
I would make a motion that we authorize the Road Commissioner and Deputy Road Commissioner, along with a representative from the Road Committee and one from the Select Board, to negotiate with Cushion Construction to provide winter road maintenance services.
With the Town Manager?
He is the Road Commissioner. So yes.
It's hat number four?
Or six.
Yeah. Are you seconding it?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Does anybody need the motion regret? All in favor? Thank you, please negotiate.
All right, who do I have the pleasure of working with?
Yes, who would like to volunteer to serve on that? Ralph raised his hand so quickly that we authorized him 100%.
I barely saw it.
Awesome, thank you.
Is there any of- Is there any objection to Ralph?
No.
There are probably lots of them, but somebody else wants to do it?
I don't think so.
I assume this is allowing the Road Commissioner to, however he chooses, pick someone from the Road Committee?
Yeah, I mean, I would just talk with the Road Commissioner.
It'll be a similar process.
I'm assuming they would do the same.
Who wants to do it? Yep, okay.
It's a big group. I hope the process doesn't get too unworthy.
It's only four of you.
It's going to be four of us, I think, and it should be pretty straightforward. I'll be making a proposal to start based on the discussion I have with John today. And we'll see if that is, see if that works.
Good.
I mean, that could go through a couple of steps, understand?
Absolutely.
A pre-conversation or two, and then the final step now.
And will that all happen before our next meeting on the 21st?
I hope so. My expectation is that we'd be able to have a proposal to review and sign, because we want to, we want to move this forward very quickly.
Because I didn't include the latter part of the paragraph there, that if it doesn't work out, that we want to issue another RFP. So I just didn't want this to go on for a month before we were able to give you that authorization.
Yeah. No, John's looking for some confirmation as soon as possible, because he has
He has to get ready.
He has to get ready, and there are requirements that involve letters of credit and things like that. And so he wants to get that sorted out as soon as possible.
One further point, Mr. Chair. Indications are that this may be an ongoing problem in terms of getting interested contractors to bid. And I'm wondering whether or not the board would like to look into alternative methods of snow plowing in the future. Perhaps taking on some level of that responsibility at a town level, weighing costs against availability. And I think it might be, it's not premature to begin thinking about that, given the level of disinterest that we experienced through two rounds of bid solicitation.
Well, I think that'll also, we don't know what we're going to get for contract. If this is just a one-year contract, then I think we have a whole different thing to look at than if it's a multi-year contract, too.
May I also just ask a question, and along these lines, if this is appropriate? But not necessarily in terms of the town taking on, because I may be the newest, or one of the newest members, but I remember how that issue was before. So my question is, are there ways that the bid process? Are there ways that that can be? Is there any leeway in that in terms of, because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, you have to be registered as a vendor of the town first before you offer RFPs. Is that true?
That's not correct.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. It's a complicated process.
Okay.
But basically, we can, in short statement, we can modify the bid process. We can modify the contract structure. We can look outside of the surrounding 10 towns. We can look countywide. Heck, we could probably even look statewide for somebody that could provide this service. We hadn't gone to that extent. But also, the economy, as you know, is on fire. A lot of these contractors don't have the time right now to sleep, let alone think about what's going to happen in six months. And so there are a few things going on here. Right now, John is proposing a one-year contract, you know, swears up and down. That's all he wants, and I believe him. He's done this for a number of years. So there are other things we can do, and I appreciate your point, Ralph. I think it's one of the things that we have to look at as we go forward, even with a one-year contract, to look at all the options.
Can we split the bid, various contracts by sections of town?
We could. That would be complicated, but we could do it.
I just think that it's probably a good idea, given what we've just experienced, that we at least initially begin to investigate options and put out feelers in advance to see why we didn't get the response we thought we would get.
And we could also do serious partnership RFP requests of other municipalities that are adjacent or within reasonable driving distance or preschool bus time and so forth. But I think there's a lot of ideas out there like that that could be developed. And I'm sure it's going to be fast-tracked by Eric. I mean, this is an important aspect of our service.
We also have neighboring communities who provide their own town services, and they might be possibly willing to partner with us.
That would be called a Public Works Department, right?
Right, but not that we would create our own, but that we could contract with another town.
That's exactly what I
Oh, that's what you meant. Okay, yes.
With a lot of words around it.
Well, and Dennis, I'm not sure what you were referring to, but we won't have any elephants in the room in these Select Board meetings. The last time, when, the only time that we developed a Public Works Department, it wasn't stated as such explicitly at a town meeting. And so if we were to look at that route again, we would have to be very certain that it was extremely clear to people what we were doing and why we're doing it. You know, we can't get anybody to bid, and the town must provide this service.
Right.
And so with that in mind, here are the options we've come up with. This is what it would entail on each option, and, you know, the town votes on what the town wants.
Yep, I agree. I'm sorry to have not been more direct. I think you're right.
Oh, I wasn't accusing you. I was just
Oh, no, no, no. I agree. You're absolutely
I think you raised a great point.
One point of reference on that, I did reach out, just so the board knows, I did reach out to the town of Fayette about the possibility of them providing this service during our interim period last time around. And they were not willing or interested at this time to provide that service for us. So, and I can understand why, but
Well, it's hard for us to find employees just like it is for anyone else.
Yeah, yeah, public or private sector at this point.
Right. I mean, people can't get their docs put in.
Okay, well, move on. I want to use the gavel sometime.
Yeah, there you go. Gavel flex. Okay, let's keep going.
That's great.
21068. We'll consider the next steps on broadband. This is actually a new standing item on the agenda, basically. Is there any update in regards to that? We do have a separate item on a relationship with Charter Communications, which we immediately covered under New Business. Any update or anything?
Say anything I can certainly add.
I'll give a little tiny bit. It won't take five minutes, so you won't have to gavel me. But I could go longer, just so you could. I would expect that this board would be asked to support funding the engineering coming right up, either at our June, next June meeting, or in July at the latest. And so that's just something we need to be aware of and ready to act on. Eric can probably give you a little more information. There's been a little bit of discussion around, can we actually use those American Recovery Program? Whatever it's called.
ARPA.
ARPA funds for engineering. And so we'll get a final say on that. I know there's a discussion going on with Senator Golden's office coming up this week or next?
The 10th or the 20th. It was a round number, I don't recall, which
Okay, anyway, so we'll be getting more information on that. So it's a very active discussion. And we are due to get those funds in July. Is that correct?
Yeah, the money's going to be starting flowing very, very soon. That money should be coming in in July.
And there's a bigger discussion, this is my last point, that the Select Board will need to consider, which is that Eric has other ideas for how that money can be used from other groups in town who have needs that could be met through the guidelines that those funds have attached to them. So.
Well, and a lot has been talked about, that those funds were going to be applicable in the scope for broadband access. If anything, that's one of the things we learned from the entire COVID period today, between school and work and so on and so forth. Broadband is absolutely essential in people's lives.
And the amount we'd be looking for is less than the amount that would be paid this year. And we probably wouldn't be looking for any of those funds from the amount that would be coming next year. So there's certainly the ability to fund other projects in town.
So if I understand it, the funding is there to do this within the budget we're going to be voting on tomorrow? And the next question, all right, well, then the next question is, do we have a cost-sharing agreement with the rest of the towns as to how that engineering cost will be split out?
We would before we spend it. We're looking now at the format of a utility district, like the Winthrop Utility District or the Greater Augusta Utility District, because they have no taxing authority. It's just a umbrella. And it's something we participated in before. Eric's been on top of this. A couple of folks in town, Dan Wells and Brian Tarbuck, are involved in those organizations, and they have given great information about it. So yes, that would all be decided. The estimate came through, and I think it was, was it $15,000?
Oh, it was more than that, I believe.
So, less, I mean.
Oh, oh, less, yeah.
I think it was 15,000 or 20,000 less if we do the engineering study as the WKLCBA, as opposed to the town of Reedfield doing it themselves. So we were talking a difference of maybe, say, $90,000 versus $70,000. So other towns are committing. Wayne has already committed. Fayette has an article on their town warrant. We have a non-binding article on ours. So it's moving along.
And we also have an article that appears every single year, which authorizes the town to intake grants and other monies that come to it from federal authorities or state authorities or gifts or whatever. And through the process of governance with this board and so forth, expend those funds appropriately.
And it allows us to spend same for budget-approved items?
Completely transparent, yes.
It doesn't even have to be for budget-approved items, right? It can be for any approved, any project the board approves. So Eric, did you have things to add?
That's a really good summary. I'm excited about the meeting with Jared Golden's office. It will be good for us to start reaching out and up, because it seems as though, as much as we're looking at a regional effort, we are going to need to be part of collaboration at every level. And that's going to be a good direction for us to have. The indications we've had are that we absolutely need to have at least the membership that we currently have, and if not more, to find a good solution to broadband. And I'm really hoping we can get something from the state. I know there are bills right now, at least one coming forward, that talk about the creation of a broadband entity to help distribute the state's broadband funds, which are $130 million, I think. So there's a lot happening, and I think that we're positioning ourselves very well by getting the engineering work done so that we can then be the recipients of construction dollars from other sources, if we're eligible. And if not, then we'll be able to move ahead on our own if we feel that's the appropriate step. So.
I just want to say that this is very exciting for me, just to hear. When I was a kid, I was very lucky to grow up in a town that was a leader in internet connectivity. It was called the Blacksburg Electronic Village. And it was essentially an experiment. Was it possible that a whole town could be connected by this thing called the Internet? BevNet. And it was an incredible experience, and I remember it so vividly as just paving the way for so much technological knowledge that I still carry with me today. And probably since I was a kid that lived out far away from the center of town, it also gave me educational opportunities that I would have never had otherwise. So when I hear this, and I appreciate so much the work and the tedium that you go through, but it's worth it in every way to me. And so thank you.
One last comment?
Sure.
Chairman, I do personally favor the concept of a regional public utility authority that's municipality-based, because it cuts the private sector out. And I think municipally-run organizations, at least on a small-town level, are much more customer-friendly and provide better service. The only concern I have is that without taxing authority, which sets up red flags in every participating community, you might have an entity that has good ideas but can't necessarily bring them to force.
Okay.
It's a good point, Ralph. Thank you.
Yep. I would say I'm in a different generation than Dennis growing up, because my phone number had letters in it. And Mrs. LaRocque
You had a rotary phone.
And Mrs. LaRocque is listening in on our conversations.
I'm not old enough for a party line. We did have BE5s.
Our first, sub-private telephone was a party line, wasn't it?
That's what we had, party line.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
That's why he's getting done on the Select Board and you're not.
That's it.
We'll move on to 211 21132, which is considering to leverage the existing relationship with Charter Communications to expand cable and internet service locally and address other contractual issues. So we have a franchise agreement. It has not been updated in a number of years. There are some provisos in there for a certain percentage or mileage, if I recall, expansion of that availability. And one thought is to, and this isn't the solution in terms of fiber to the home, by the way, but one thought is to at least fill in where we can in the meantime. Is that correct?
That's correct. And that's really one of the first directions that the Broadband Committee in Reedfield has taken is to say, well, we know that we want to do something long-term. What can we do in the short term to provide better service to our residents? And one of our members is involved with Telecom. I won't mention the name, because I think it's important for him to maintain his professional separation from this type of stuff. But he's an expert in the field and has suggested that we potentially could have some significant leverage here, particularly given the scrutiny and visibility that telecom, internet, and cable TV service providers are seeing and feeling right now because of the money coming their way and coming into the market. And Charter is no exception. Charter is the company that we have. It's currently expired technically, but from a legal and functional perspective, we do have an ongoing relationship with in that franchise agreement. It's very interesting. When we talk about all this stuff, we're talking about terms of television and cable TV service, because that's all that is allowed to be negotiated with these companies in some cases, not all, but in most cases. So we have, we don't have an obligation, or they don't have an obligation to us to provide internet. They have an obligation to provide television service, and the internet just comes along for the ride. So a little bit of peculiarity in some of this stuff, but I think this is a good direction for us to take. And I believe at the meeting, and Catherine can add if she thinks I missed anything, the suggestion was that I be given authorization to begin this process with some assistance from Town Council, because a letter from a lawyer really helps get attention from these companies. And it shows that we're serious about getting this done quickly.
You don't want to, Eric has talked to them before and sort of gotten the local-level customer service and went up the ladder one level. But we've been advised that we really need to get to the regional level and that a letter from legal counsel will rise to that level and that regional level will have a different response than your, and we're talking region like northeast states, will have a different response than somebody who's just serving Maine. And we're just a little town in Maine, and we're asking for something. So if they just ignore us, we'll go away, because they're a huge national corporation. And so it's kind of, we've been getting advice on how to deal with a corporate structure like that. And then we also learned that there's some, there's some real possibilities that Charter could provide a fiber network for us. We already have one in town, but it's not fiber to the home. It's fiber past the home, and then the drops are done differently. And what we may end up being able to work through with them, we'll have to see over time how that works out, is that there could be more drops. So right now, there might be one every half-mile, and if you needed to And if you needed to, you might put five in every mile. And that would allow the speed to continue to come into the drops for residences. So there's a lot that could be done if that's the direction Charter chooses to go. And so a, as things play out over the next year or two, we may have options between the fiber to the home network and what cable may change into because of everything that's happening on the federal and state level. So we're, we're trying to keep our hands kind of in both pots.
And, and just for the record, Charter is Spectrum.
Yes.
Okay, so yes, just if you're keeping score at home because that can be very confusing.
Now, two major players nationwide.
Yeah, it's amazing. But I just want to make sure because there was also, okay, there's also the other one, which is not.
In town?
No, no, just in the nation.
Which is?
Well, there's Spectrum and then there's what Fairpoint used to be.
No, no, it's not.
It's not Fairpoint anymore.
Spectrum is the regional service that Charter provides for.
And the other national player is, I can't, I can't recall offhand. It's Naples.
Comcast?
Comcast, yeah, something.
Comcast. It's not, I don't think it's in the northeast.
Well, there's actually been discussions about whether they sort of trade by the areas. Areas.
Comcast is all you can get.
Yep.
The other one we have locally is consolidated communication, which is, which has some fiber service in town, but it's, that's not how it drops.
So there's significant fiber cabling up and down, say 17?
Yes.
From Manchester to maybe?
Through Fayette.
All the way down, yeah.
Okay, so.
But it's old and it's limited in bandwidth, so it, there's, there's a lot to it. There's a lot.
It can be old, but it's still got lots of strands in it.
Yes. Well, and you know that those, you can go online and we can provide you a map. If you remind me, I'll do that for the next meeting, but just a visual. But there, you know that it's there because that's how the school library network comes through, the main school library network. So it goes through all of your towns to deliver that service to all of your schools. Right.
Okay.
And, but it doesn't mean that anybody's paying to drop it any other place because that's funding is coming from all those little fees that are added on to like your cellphone bill, your telephone bill, your cable bill. Well, you're paying for it to go to the schools.
To go to the schools.
Right, but you're not paying for it to come to your house.
I would imagine we pay for that several times over by now.
Well, the bottom line is they have a lot of hardware already in place.
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
And if they're servicing 1,200 or 1,500 drops in Reedfield, for example, to the conversion to fiber on every single one of those plus the additional that we want is a tall order. And that's why the drive is for us to perhaps look at a utility district or something of that nature. That doesn't mean that they can't be somewhat of a player on it. Eventually I'd like them to be a customer of ours.
And we can, yeah, right.
Could happen.
And we can.
Our utility district.
And I don't want to belabor the point, but the reason that we are doing this, sometimes like we get lost in all the committees, but the reason that we are doing this is to improve the, the access and the speed and availability of the quality of internet in Reedfield. Right, isn't that it? Okay.
And I like to talk a little deeper into what that is. And that's the delivery and access to telemedicine. It's a delivery and access to educational opportunity.
Stream.
Delivery and access to being able to work in New York City and live in Reedfield.
Yeah.
Or to, you know, do business in Reedfield from New York City.
Right.
Whatever.
Yeah, it's a great business opportunity, yep.
Okay, so I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager to discuss our franchise agreement with Charter Communications and to consult legal counsel in that endeavor.
I second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or have we already done a discussion?
I think we.
Do we want to set a limit on time or money?
I don't think we do.
It's premature.
It's an exploratory, I mean, basically what we're trying to do at this point is to get a response.
Yes, and to see if we can get more service to town as what's provided for in that current agreement.
So they'll give us some sort of answer, hopefully, that we can evaluate further and then take action on to authorize more pointed discussion perhaps. Okay, all in favor of the motion? Thank you. Was that your job tonight to deliver that?
Oh, I'm under pressure, yes, so that was good.
Consider approval of a locally administered project agreement with Maine DOT for design and engineering for the proposed church road sidewalk. That's in your packet. It is a large number of pages and I would like to go ahead and move that we authorize the signature by the town manager to pursue the locally administered project agreement with DOT for the design and engineering work for this church road sidewalk.
Second.
It moved in second. Is there any discussion on this?
Yes, there is.
Go right ahead.
I, I just, state contracts make my eyes roll back in the air. But, uh, let's see, we'll start with G under reimbursement.
Do you know what page it is?
Uh, let's see, three of 10.
Thank you.
Okay. Completion of project, payment in full, all contract compliance, blah, blah, blah. And receipt by Maine DOT of a completed consultant evaluation from the municipality. Is that an expense we're going to have to incur and where does that come from?
Well, I don't know if it's something that we will have to incur or something we'll have to do in-house. But I, but I will say that the proposal is for 80/20 cost share. So if we do it, we'll be paying 20% of the cost and the state will be paying 80%.
And as I read this, the consultant is ours because we're mandated to supply a report by a consultant.
Yeah, and I have to double check. I'm not entirely sure whether or not the local project administrator can serve in that role or if, or if we do need to hire an outside consultant.
Your intention is to be the local project administrator.
Yeah, we're going to do it as a local project.
Yes, myself and Anna Carl, the deputy.
And that's the project administration.
Yes.
They won't be out there straight from ground.
And then, again.
No, but they, they won't, but we do have a responsibility for oversight of the project and for verification. There's a lot that goes along with that component. Yeah.
But there's training involved in doing that, qualification standards, and you and Anna have met those.
That's correct, yes.
And my next issue, I got a few. Again, same page, Maine DOT costs. And it was my understanding that they weren't going to be slicing into our grant pie, but number seven sure looks like they will. Municipality shall share in these costs commensurate with its share percentage of the project. At a minimum, Maine DOT will reconcile these costs upon completion of the project and deduct the municipal municipality's share from the final invoice payment. It sounds to me like they, they're going to, they're going to be reviewing and charging admin fees.
That, that's what that.
Which I didn't think they were going to do. So that grant amount is subject to costs that they will pass on to us for their review and blessing.
That's right.
Okay, so we don't know what that will be yet and we don't know how that will diminish the pot.
We, we don't, one thing I can say is that being a locally administered project means the DOT role is minimal. And I can say that their staff time and their, not that they don't want to help us, but they are stretched pretty thin already. It's one reason why these LPAs are so common and they actually give us the option at the beginning of, of choosing whether or not we want to do it in-house or have our own, or have them lead the project with local roads unless they are absolutely forced to. They.
They want to walk away from it as fast as they can.
They want, they want to walk away from it as fast as they can. They want to let us manage it, which is a good thing, but they are also there to be a backup. One of the things that, that we have the benefit of is a good.
Glass is half-full for you, isn't it?
Well, it is, but we also have a very good working relationship with DOT. And we have a member of the DOT staff serving on our road committee. So we have, not that there would ever be anything like this, but if we needed an extra interpretation or extra help with something, I'm fairly certain we could get it.
The way I read this is there could potentially be a charge for their services against our grant.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, that's a possibility.
And then takings, uh, four of 10 for rights of way. Do we have any takings that we're going to have to negotiate or do we have a significant enough right of way so that we can?
Can I answer that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Can I just ask what the word is? Takings?
Takings.
Takings.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. I think until we cite that sidewalk on which side of that road, we don't really want to comment on that because.
Okay, well, sure.
We, we don't know exactly where it will go. It's very possible that some of the sidewalks intend to be in the right of way. It's very possible that some of the grading or something might not be.
Might encroach on private property.
But that's a whole separate kind of thing.
Okay.
And so, I think like whenever you build a road or widen a road.
Oh, sure.
Or, or do a sidewalk, I will say this, and Catherine can go ahead and, and comment on this, I remember walking our new sidewalk when we cut the ribbon right out here and I believe the state was an excellent partner to work with at that time.
Yes, and that was going to be my question. They were great to deal with and I think as things came, were you here for that? No, that was a step.
It was a couple of years before me.
There were several issues that came up and the project came in costing more because we ran into different underground issues that hadn't been identified previously and the cost did not go exorbitantly high. But is this the same contract? It's the standard one that we would have had from the last experience?
That was also a locally administered project, so the process is very much the same.
And the overall mileage is extremely small, much smaller than what the original sidewalk was.
What, was it a mile for the town and a half mile for the school? Is that what it was?
The school was the partner, yeah.
Right, and then this sidewalk is going to be how long?
About a third of a mile.
Third.
Third.
Roughly.
So probably a fifth of that project.
Right.
Yeah, I think we can easily, easily management, manage it and I think it's great that we have two LPA certified staff members able to, to help with this. We can help, we can trade things off if we need to, depending on workload. So I know it's a lot, Ralph. I know it's a big contract, but we, we did both receive training on this and I've worked with federal projects before. It's a huge amount of paperwork. It's a pain in the, it's a pain in the butt.
A close to transfer station, it's not fun.
So I, I think we're able to manage it. The takings question is a good one. Bruce answered it perfectly. We don't know, that's what this is about, to determine whether or not we may have to do that. And if we have to do too much of it, we might say, well, this isn't going to work, but.
There is a walk away provision.
Absolutely, always, always.
No need for discussion, but one last point of concern on seven of 10 is the confidentiality agreement. I'm skeptical because it, I understand some of these negotiations need to be done in private, but this, at least to me, looks like some of those costs ought to be upfront and it's, it seems to need to be overbroad.
So the confidential, so you're referring to the contract that we have with?
General provisions.
The preferred vendor.
General provisions under the state contract, item three.
On page seven.
Okay.
Seven of 10.
No, this is in, in right of way negotiations, property appraisals and construction costs.
And engineering estimates of construction costs to the extent required and it lists the state statute. And maybe that's there for a good reason. I'm not familiar with the state statute, but anytime.
It is.
That you protect costs under a confidentiality agreement for takings bothers me.
So that, that one does come from, I believe, federal guidance. One of the things that, that, that we're not supposed to be doing as people, as managers of this project, would be to go to somebody and say, well, this person's taking $50,000 for their property, you should be taking the same. There's a, a lot of protection that's built in here to, to ensure that we as a municipality are not applying undue coercion, things like that. So there is a lot of confidentiality around.
That part I understand is it's the protection of engineering estimates and construction costs, which should really not factor into negotiations for takings because that's a case by case, personal property discussion.
I'm reading that as engineering estimates of the construction cost.
That you would not share those.
Nothing to do with the other two items, which were right of way.
Nothing to do with the appraisals or any of that stuff.
Well, so one reason for that also, Ralph, I guess, just to, is that this is not a normal bid process. This is not an open, necessarily an open bid process. What we have is the, we don't go with the lowest bidder on this.
Right, lowest responsible, responsive.
And responsible and responsible are the first two criteria we have to evaluate. So up until I think we get to a final decision on who we're working with, that stuff does have to stay confidential.
Okay.
Because the cost is the last thing you look at with these types of contracts. It's bizarre. But it's, it's, it's a, it's a process.
The way it is.
It's, yeah, federal dollars have this for this type of construction project. You look at qualifications first, you pick based on qualifications and then you.
Then you look at the numbers.
Then you look at the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion's on the floor. I guess I would just men, mention at under a half million dollars with 80% of it being paid for by the state that if there's a variance that takes us to 79%, yes, we might be out a couple thousand dollars. But I, I really trust the qualifications that we're bringing to the project and the prior experience, I think, is of the town.
I agree, I just, I'm concerned about, about the estimate for the total project cost too, given our recent experience with other capital projects. And numbers the number and that's what we're, we're going to bid with.
We're committing to the engineering.
Exactly right. I wanted to make that same point. The engineering piece of this is all we are looking at, all we're signing up for. The total cost of that is $36,000 for the.
No, 45.
Okay, so 45, $9,000.
Nine of its ours.
Nine of its ours, 36 of the state's. So it, it's, it's important, it's a fairly large expense, but in the grand scheme of the project.
We know how that works.
It's not so much and we're just doing the engineering and design phase. We will do this all again, plus, plus, when we get to the construction phase, so.
Thank you, I'm sorry to repeat this again.
Did we have a second?
There was a second, it was.
Yeah, we're in the discussion.
Yep, so discussion is ended. I'll go ahead and take a vote. And again, the motion was to approve the locally administered agreement with DOT for the design and engineering proposal for the church.
Authorizing Eric to sign, right?
Authorizing Eric to proceed with the signature. Is, any, any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Next we'll consider nominations for the Spirit of America Awards. We had one that was presented to us. It was emailed to you separately. Typically, we don't discuss the individual. It is a matter of public record if somebody wanted to come down to town hall and say, I need to see that nomination. That's fine with, with us. But I'm in favor of the nomination that was made and I'm sure the rest of you had an opportunity to look at it. Would anybody want to put forward a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 Spirit of America Award nomination that we received confidentially. received confidentially, semi-confidentially.
Semi-confidential.
So it, it can be seen if you request it, but we're trying to keep it as a surprise, that comment, never mind. I'll make a motion to approve the 2021 Spirit of America Award nomination that we were presented, and authorize the town manager to order the appropriate award.
Second. It's been moved in seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. In 2020, so this is, this is really the, this, this is for the past year.
This is for the past year.
So last summer, we had a discussion that involved a lot of people who were working on making masks and so on, so forth, and doing different things for COVID mitigation, and we never completed that. And at the time, the suggestion was that we have a plaque and maybe just list everybody's names on it, but do one of those with little tabs, so that as we get corrected, which we surely will, of additional names or whatever, that we could add them, or we could make a general plaque with a role that is on record of those people, but at least give them all a Spirit of America certificate. So could we complete that and do, I don't think we need to take any vote on that, but could we complete that so we can also do that and do award or whomever's EMC days? That's typically where we do that, right?
It is, or we have a special event.
Or a special event.
Yeah.
Boy, Heritage Days would be a great time to do it.
It would be fantastic time, yeah.
I'd also like to request that we get the rest of the names entered in that chart. There are quite a few missing years and some missing names.
I wonder if those were, I, I wondered if those were years we did not give them out.
No, they were given out.
Okay.
For instance, I received one, I don't know what year it is, and that's not listed.
I move Catherine B. Pass with going in.
So, yeah, I, I don't know who put this together, I don't know when it was put together, it seemed like a good point of reference, but like many records...
I'll ask the new town clerk if she could assist me in leading me to the place, I would look that up.
Well, you know who I bumped into today at, at Town Hall was Robin. So she would certainly, I'm sure with a phone call or two, be able to help us out, and probably passed annual booklets or whatever they call them have been listed.
May.
Yeah. So, okay, great. Let's, let's, let's scrape some roads and crack some seals.
Oh, seals and cracks.
We have, we will take 21135 first, which is road striping. In your packet were the bids? Which one are we doing? Road striping.
135, so that's the, the second three. So we received three bids.
Yep, go ahead.
The, the low bid was for 5K Corporation. The next to the lowest bid was Lucas Striping. Lucas Striping is our current contractor, and this is one situation where I believe that it is appropriate, and my recommendation that's supported by the deputy road commissioner, is that we go with Lucas Striping for this award due to their incredible service over the past few years, and the fact that they are right here in town if we need anything done, they pay taxes here, and we'd like to support them.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I agree with that, and I would also note that when we get into crossbars and curb markings and everything, that their price was much higher, 50% higher. And I, I don't know, because I don't know the mileage involved and so forth, but you could end up pretty darn close, I think.
The other contracts were 50% higher.
For that portion, I'm talking about the, the low bidder, had a higher price on those items, a lower price on the single lines. But, and then the third bidder was substantially higher all around.
Am I reading this wrong? Aren't they a dollar for those things?
They're a dollar for some of them, $2 for some, so...
No, Lucas Striping is straight across on the green, it's a dollar and a dollar.
It's a dollar and dollar, yes, for Lucas.
And the other one was a dollar and...
A dollar fifty and a dollar and $2, so they're still lowest.
On, on that particular item.
Right.
And so my point was that this, you're paying by the, the amount of paint that's being put down.
Yep, okay.
And they did ask for a date change because of refinery...
Supply chain.
Supply issue.
Yeah, so they, they did, and that was actually requested prior to this getting into the packet. Since that time, they have received paint.
So they're good to go?
They're good to go.
With our date? Let's look at, let's get a motion on the floor for road striping services.
I'll make a motion to award the road striping service to Lucas Striping LLC as presented.
Second. It's been moved in seconded to award the road striping contract for, to Lucas Striping LLC, and I'll mention it's a local company. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to crack sealing.
I'd make a motion to award the crack sealing contract to Indus, known as in the bid...
Seal Coating Inc.
Seal Coating, yes. Seal Coating Inc., but I like that they're na, they're, they're sort of corporate name, Indus, as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Great. Discussion, who did it last year?
Indus.
Indus did. So we have experience with them as well.
Good work for us.
Indus. They're substantially lower in their price per gallon. Okay, so is there any discussion on crack sealing services? Seeing none, all in favor? Great.
We finished early, Bruce.
Well, we're not done yet. You, you gave me an opportunity to...
Bruce gets to talk.
To talk.
Oh, right, but I mean, we finished our agenda items.
We have finished our agenda item.
Are we gonna need an extension?
For your...
I don't think you will.
That's it, yeah.
Yes, he shuffled his hands.
I, I did prepare some remarks, I mean, this is my last opportunity to address widely and put on the record, if you will, just a few thoughts. And so I hope you will bear with me as I read this. I'd like to thank the people of Reed Field and this board for the trust you placed in me during the past six years, five as your chair. Thank you fellow board members, Val Pomelaw, Alan Curtis, Tom Dunham, John Parent, who left us far too early, Catherine Woodson for your deep background of knowledge of Reed Field and always encouraging a forward focus, Ralph Eno for your wise counsel, your deep and varied experience, and your always helpful perspectives. Dennis Price for your sense of humor, leadership, enthusiasm, and your partnership as vice-chair during this year of unique COVID challenges, and it was an interesting year. Yes. I want to especially thank Chris Sammons, who ran with me six years ago with the goal of good governance during a time when there were some challenges in town. Chris is also quietly involved in many of the finer details of making Reed Field a nicer community. She kind of ties a bow on a lot of little things, and I really appreciate that. Our goal was good governance, and I think we achieved it. Our tone is different, it's positive, we communicate respectfully with each other in our community. We have the involvement of so many great dedicated volunteers and boards, commissions, and committees. I think at one point I counted almost 200. So there are far too many to name without error, but I want to thank every single one of them. Our staff is a high-quality one, and they're exceptionally, and they exceptionally proved that during this past challenging year. I've made a point to try to thank each one of them individually during the last week or so. As you know, the select board has only one employee that directs and hires and works with. Our town manager, who joined us during the first year, Chris and Mike, first year in office, is a great asset to this town and board. Eric Dyer is the one other person I'm going to name tonight. His partnership, experience, and vision is personally appreciated by me, and the many Reed Field citizens who have often shared that appreciation with me of him voluntarily. I'm so pleased he and his family also made our town their home. I want to also thank him for being a quiet volunteer on many occasions as well. This board focused on too many things in the last five years, but I'm particularly pleased and indebted to my fellow select persons that we, we established a robust local business directory on our town website, relaunched the Reed Field Enterprise Fund. We proposed a targeted property assistance, tax assistance ordinance, which the public passed. We continually refined our transfer station operations and brought in a new partner to the town's benefit. We made long overdue capital investments needed in our library and fire station buildings. We adopted a food sovereignty ordinance, and it was supported also and voted in by the public. We made Heritage Days an annual community celebration, and Dennis will never fail to remind us. We now have a marijuana establishment ordinance in place consisting of the elements that the public wanted approved. We patiently pursued a long-desired sidewalk for Lower Church Road over many years, and now have state of Maine 80% project funding approval and some initial steps done this very night.
Yeah.
We are very actively working with an eye on the future on efforts to improve high-quality broadband access. We, did I thank you, Catherine?
You did.
Okay, I want to make sure I didn't skip you.
Do it again.
Okay. But thank you for this as well. The town beach has been made free for use of all residents, and we continue to focus on our recreational services. Underlying all of this is what you pay for municipal services. I've been involved in five budgets as chair, and I'm pleased that fiscally, by fiscally managing and budgeting well in the last four years, along with the current fifth, one that's going to be voted on tomorrow, that the municipal portion of your tax bill, what this board directly proposes and controls, we don't control the school board, we don't control the county, but what we actually propose and oversee, has been essentially flat. I think it's gone up two cents on the mill rate in aggregate over five years. We've done that while keeping services and strategic investments in place. We have maintained or enhanced great trails, roads, conservation spaces, age-friendly programs, a fine library, well-kept cemeteries, efficient recycling, public access communications, thank you, Al Back, superb emergency responsiveness, and many other good solid services. All of this comes from working together and sharing common goals. I don't have much in the way of advice to impart except this. Please understand that the people up here, and the many who volunteer in our town do so for unselfish reasons of service and community affection. Please do not allow any one person or any one issue to sow unnecessary divisiveness in Reed Field. Thank you for being a strong and resilient community. I'm humbled by any confidence you've placed in me. I've occasionally been asked how much of a chore or sacrifice serving on select board must be, but I want you to know that it was not the case. It really was my pleasure to play a very small role in this wonderful community, and I hope to see many of you at the Reed Field Heritage Day celebrations in August, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Yay!
It's a vote.
So before anybody leaves...
That's so fast.
Before anybody leaves, we want to present a small, um, thank you to all the staff and board.
Get out of here.
Yay!
Ooh, good stuff!
It, it, it has a cork on it.
Yeah, that's right. It screws off, don't worry, it screws off.
So thank you.
Thank you.
It screws on. Absolutely.
It should be enjoyable.
Thank you.
That was very elegant.
Thank you, appreciate it.
That's me.
That's all right.
Well, this is going to be very refreshing this evening, maybe.
Sorry, we pulled it over.
Yep.